Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, February 12th, 2024. It's time for the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice, please.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Here.
Thank you. If you'd jump me for the pledge of allegiance. Item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
I move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Aaron number four call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move down to item F, special business. Very special item one tonight. I'd like to introduce Chief Stanbaugh. Chief, take it away.
Brenda, if you would join Lieutenant Patterson's lieutenant on the front of the mayor, please. On January 23rd, 2024, Garden City officers responded to a medical assistance call of a one-month-old baby not breathing. When officers arrived, they learned the baby was breathing and crying. Officers discovered that Garden City resident Brenda Goslin, can you say that right, hopefully? Boslin had heard yelling outside of her residence. Brenda went outside to see what the commotion was about and was told the baby was not breathing. She saw the baby was discolored, not breathing, and appeared lifeless. Brenda had been trained in CPR and began chest compressions and rescue breathing. Because of Brenda, the one-month-old baby is alive today. The Garden City Police Department and the City of Garden City hereby recognize Brenda for saving the life of this infant. Brenda is a valued member of our community, and thanks to her, one of our youngest citizens is alive. Thank you. So with that.
Well, those are fun agenda items, they do, aren't they? Yeah, that's great. Not everybody gets to save a life. Let's move down to item number two, which is our audit presentation. It's in your packet. You've got a copy, Lisa. I'll start with you.
John, Mayor's member of the council, I'd like to present John Russell, a member of Zweigert John, our auditing firm, and he's going to present the audit tonight, and he'll stand for questions.
Right. Mayor, council, thanks for letting me be here tonight. Not much thanks for letting me follow that. I will say that the fun part of the agenda is now over. We're going to talk some accounting now, so. If you follow along, maybe it's a little better, a little more interesting. So I'm going to start on page four. It's got our letterhead at the top. This is kind of the main thing you're paying for with the audit is our opinion report here. I'm just going to walk through kind of what this says real briefly. That first paragraph says that we've audited your financial statements. In the next paragraph, we're giving our opinion saying they're presented fairly in all material respects. So in layman's terms, a clean audit opinion. So congratulations to the city and staff on that. Doing our audit, we follow auditing standards and gain audit evidence to support our opinion. Of course, management is responsible for the information presented in the financial statements. On the next page, as auditors, our responsibility is to gain reasonable assurance about whether those financial statements are presented correctly or fairly. At the bottom of the page, it mentions some required supplementary information in addition to the basic financial statements, and we'll cover some of that. And on page six, the last paragraph there says there's another report, and we will very briefly cover that one at the back as we get there. So page seven, just trying to hit some highlights and maybe explain a little bit. I'm guessing that a lot of you don't work full-time in governmental accounting, and so some of what you see may be a little unfamiliar. So page seven is a balance sheet, if you will, for the city as a whole. The first column there is the governmental activities. So those are things that the city does that are primarily supported by taxes of some kind, whether those are property taxes or revenue shared by the state. The business-type activities, those are activities that the city does that are that are supported primarily by user fees. So I think your water and sewer and your sanitation funds. And then there's a total for the for the city as a whole. And then the far column on the right, the component unit is the urban renewal. That's that's under the somewhat under the purview of the city, and so it's it would be we'd be leaving something out if we didn't include that there and show that information. Couple of significant numbers on here, cash and cash equivalents, of course, is is always an important number. We'll talk a little bit more detail about what what's in those balances when we go to the footnotes. The due from other government governmental units is also one that we'll talk about in the notes. Just hit some highlights. That second bolded section before below assets deferred outflows is one that's unique to governmental accounting. There's a it's got a counterpart towards the bottom deferred inflows, which actually does not have a balance this year. And then if you go just a couple lines above that, there's a line that says net pension liability. And that's a almost a $6 million figure. So that's a large figure. Really, those ones, I point those out because they have no bearing on how the the city operates. Accounting standards say they have to be there. They're related to your participation in the state's pension plan or Percy. And so full accrual accounting requires recognition of those amounts. However, you will never pay out that liability. And so that does cause a difference between the net position, what is called on this statement, and your fund balance and some of the other funds. So you know, I like to point those out. Don't lose sleep over those. Really, I would even recommend, don't even think about them.
Councilmember Jacobs, is that?
Well, yeah, I just, because I had looked at that balance sheet and I couldn't tie the the one, the 1846, you know, so throughout the other rest day between, you know, we have a fund balance of 54, 54, and I'm like, I saw the 4710 and the water and sewer budget and the 907 development services, and I couldn't figure out how to calculate that math. So that was my question is how do you get to that math? But it's obviously part of those Percy.
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah. So really, if you look at page 10, that kind of shows the difference between the total net position. So if you look at governmental activities on page seven, 13,714, and if you're comparing that to on page nine, it's 8,910,000. And so page 10 kind of shows you what the differences are. So capital assets is also one that's not included on that fund balance. In fact, let's let's just talk about page nine. This is another balance sheet, and this is for your governmental fund. So again, these are the tax-supported activities. This is presented on a modified accrual, which means we've we've really pulled out anything that's long-term from this. So capital assets, long-term assets, long-term debt, and those pension items are pulled out of there, and it's it's more focused on the on the short term or really on the budgetary period, if you will. And so that's that's why on page 10, you'll see some of those differences. If you look at those items on page 10, every one of those is is something that's a long-term kind of a thing. And so that's in layman's terms, maybe the difference between those two.
Okay. So our true fund balance is the the 5040.
Yes.
And then development services has the 900.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So and one of the things I like to look at when I'm looking at these governmental funds at the balance sheet is that the fund balance section, you know, of course, fund balance will be the reserves that you've built up over time, equity. And so it's you've got a couple different categories. So assigned, those are those are funds that have been earmarked. Committed is is restricted from an outside party that says there's a specific purpose those funds have to be used for. Non-spendable, those are prepaid expenses, so insurance and things that you've paid in advance. You can't spend that money again, therefore, it's non-spendable. And then unassigned is one that the state has been looking at. I just want to make sure that entities aren't just stockpiling cash. You look at your legislators, and when they talk about property tax relief, this is one of the things that they look at. And so I like to look at that, and I like to compare that unassigned to your total expenditures for the year, which are coming from page 11. But for your general fund, you got $2.9 million in unassigned fund balance, meaning it's available for any use of the city, compared to 9.5, almost 9.6 million dollars in expenditures for the year. That's about four months of reserves.
What's considered healthy?
So the state likes three to six months. I'm more of a fan of six to 12. Whereas if whereas a significant portion of your funding comes from property taxes, and you're getting big chunks of that primarily in January and July, when that's when everybody's, you know, mortgages, you know, is paying those out. And so I like to see about six months. At four months, you're probably adequate.
Does the state look at? Do they just look at the math and the number and do the calculations percentage? Or do they look at things like circumstances, for instance, some three quarters of it's in the floodplain, right? And so we're we're in part of that committed funds is for that study.
Right.
And if there were a flood, we'd burn right through that. And so do they say, well, gosh, based on that, your next river, three quarters of it is a floodplain, we'll allow a higher percentage? Or do they still? Or do they care?
So they're probably not going into as much detail, just because if we're they're looking at cities, there's about 200 cities in Idaho, and so they just don't know all of those circumstances, which is why it's wise for you as a city, like the the 1.5 million dollars that's that's sitting in assigned fund balance. Those are some of those funds that you've set aside for some some things like that. So it's still your responsibility to determine what's appropriate for you. And say, I will I will say we've audited some entities, not any cities that I can think of, but some entities have 20 years' worth of reserves. It's like, okay, you know, what what is what is your plan for that money?
Gotcha.
And so.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I I think where you're at is appropriate. I will point out on this one, you'll see on page nine, the library debt service fund, you'll see there's no balances on that. Basically, it's collecting tax revenues for that and then making those debt service payments. So there's never any residuals in that. Okay, page 11, real briefly. If you go down to the third line from the bottom, net change in fund balance, that's essentially the bottom line, if you will, whether that fund operated at a at a profit or a loss. Can you see? So most of those funds, the library, of course, broke even, $69,000 in tax revenue and $69,000 in debt payment. So okay, and that's it for that page. I'm going to jump to page 13 now. Now we're looking at your proprietary funds, those business-type ones. So you've got a water and sewer fund and a sanitation fund. Again, this is a balance sheet. This is a little more traditional-looking balance sheet. So all the things you would normally expect to see if you were looking at a business are there. Again, I still like to look at that unrestricted net position and compare. And so in the water and sewer fund, that's about 10 to 11 months' worth of operation. So that that seems like a comfortable number to me. The sanitation fund, however, is a very small unrestricted net position. Actually, it was negative last year, so that's an improvement. $2.5 million in expenditures in this fund. So that's about one day of reserves. However, it's, you know, this is, you know, collecting those sanitation fees. So it's kind of an in and an out. So there's there's not a lot of risk that that you don't have enough reserves there. It'd be nice to see a little bit more than that, but again, if you look at page 14, the income statement, you'll see that that particular fund, the sanitation fund, had about a $24,000 profit for the year. And so like I said, better than it was last year significantly. So and the water and sewer fund also operated at a profit, which you want to see because over time, the costs of maintaining those systems tend to go up. So okay, and that was all I was going to cover on that. And again, it's that third line from the bottom is the change in that position that that's kind of the bottom bottom line. So real briefly on page 15, this is a cash flow statement. So that's looking at that same year's worth of activity, but from a cash perspective instead of a profit-loss perspective. Going down to about three-fourths of the way down, there's a line that says net increase in cash and cash equivalents. That just shows that that both of those funds brought more cash in than went out the door. Right? And with that, I'm going to jump some pages now. We're going to try to go a little faster here. We're going to go to page 23. We're into the notes to the financial statements. I'm at the bottom of the page note two about cash. This paragraph here just shows there were $334,000 in cash on your books. The bank balances at at the end of the fiscal year were 564,000. Very normal for there to be a difference. That's due to outstanding checks and things that just haven't cleared the bank yet. And of that 564,508,000 was covered by either FDIC or NCUA. So there's a small amount of that that was that was exposed to to credit risk if a bank were to fail. We have seen over the last couple of years, a couple of bank failures. FDIC has been making depositors whole. So even even those that have been in excess of those limits, the people who've been left holding the bag, if you will, have been those who've invested in the bank. So there's no guarantee that they'll continue to do that, but it's a pretty minimal risk still that you're that you were a little bit over on that. So continuing with this note on page 25, it kind of shows where some of the excess funds are, which is the state treasurer's local government investment pool, about $12 million sitting in that. That's paying some decent interest now. So that's quite helpful to the city. Okay, and then note three also on page 25. I mentioned on that balance sheet, one of the numbers to look at is due from other governmental units. There's quite a bit going on in that line, and so we've got a little more detail here to to see who owes city some money there, or who owed the city money. That's all been collected by now, I'm sure. A large part of that being from the state tax commission. All right, and now I'm going to jump to page 32. Most of what I'm skipping over here is the pension footnote for Percy. So those numbers I said to ignore, we're definitely going to ignore these five or six pages unless you're just a real glutton for punishment. So on page 32, note nine is about your long-term liabilities. So of course, 2004, you went up, you have a general obligation bond to to build this facility that we're in tonight. The next page, at the top of the page then, there's a table that shows the activity on that, shows the balance as of the prior year, the decrease, $60,000 is the principal that was paid on that. So there's 125,000 left, at least as of September 30th. 60,000 will be paid in the current fiscal year that we're in, which means that from that next table, there's two years left on that. Not much interest left, not much principal. So that's got to be good to get that taken care of. And then also on this page at the bottom, we have two note elevens. Look at that. The second note 11, other commitments. Credit cards and charge accounts that you may have around town that your employees have access to as as a necessary evil, if you will, of doing business. We take a look at those. Those are riskier transactions than the regular accounts payable that come before you at each meeting. Typically, we'll we'll select a couple of months at random. Usually, the month of September is one of them, and then a couple others at random. And we'll look at those those statements and and make sure that there's receipts or some other support for all of those charges that are happening. And we look and make sure that the proper processes are being followed. Happy to report there were no issues with that. And as of September 30th, the balance on those was just under $16,000 out of 102,000 that's available. So all right, I'm going to jump to page 38 now. This is the budget-to-actual comparison schedule for the general fund. This schedule is set up with the original, as the as the budget was originally adopted. Final would reflect any changes that were made through budgetary amendments. Looks like there were none. And then we're comparing that final amount to actual the variance column, if it's a positive number, that's a favorable variance, negative then would be unfavorable. For example, taxes, your property taxes, you'd budgeted for 4,973, actually collected 4,985. So it's $11,000 better than expected. Total revenues came in pretty close, just about $42,000 less than budgeted. More importantly, though, are the expenditures. You'll see total expenditures were were well under. And that's kind of broke out by the the basic functions of the city, your general government, public safety, culture, and then capital outlay. And you'll see each of those areas was under budget. So that's a that's a good job budgeting on that. On the next page, we've got the budget-to-actual comparison schedule for the developmental development services. And you'll see this on this one, the expenditures actually were just a little bit over. Of course, with development, that's a that's a really tough one to to plan for and budget for. Some of that just kind of happens whether you want it to or not. So again, that's that's not too bad. And you'll see that charges for services in this case came in $329,000 over what was budgeted, you know, more than covering that that budgetary over expenditure. So while technically a violation, it's probably not something I would be too too concerned about and and realistically, and I know there's not not much of a consequence. So okay, I'm going to jump to page 43. This is that other report that I mentioned we talked about real briefly. And basically, it takes us as accountants about two pages to say we look at your internal controls as part of our audit to determine what we need to look at, but we're not giving you an opinion on whether they're good or bad. Now, with that said, if if we see something that maybe needs a minor tweak, we're, you know, our we'll talk with Lisa about that. If there was something serious that needed attention, we would bring that to your attention. I'm happy to report. We don't have anything to bring to your attention as as a body, and I'm not even sure I didn't work on the audit this year. I'm not even sure if we had any major suggestions for for Lisa, but we do, we do like to be a resource, and so you're welcome to reach out to us at any time with questions. It's always easier to deal with something as as it's happening versus six to nine months later when none of us quite remember what was going on. So with that, are there any questions for me?
Okay, questions, council? Appreciate that summary. That was I could follow along pretty well. You know.
All right, if not, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to acknowledge Cliff Libby and thank her for keeping us accountable and keeping our books in good order. Means a lot when something like that can go that smoothly and doesn't happen on accident, I'm sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Counsel, basically, this is an action item. We're just looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt of the audit.
I so move.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, motion carries unanimously. Item three, special business. This is the Development Services Department Notice of Decisions. This is in your packet. This storm broil is available. If you have any questions on that, these are decisions that have been made at Planning and Zoning Commission that have been forwarded. And we're dealing with those in a group unless the council pulls one out. So they're taking action by the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I acknowledge the Notice of Decision made by Development Service Department and subsidiaries and would move for no action.
Thank you. Got a motion to have a second? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the record, say the motion carried unanimously. And we'll go to item G1. This is a public hearing for SUBFY 2022-5. This is a final plat approval of 77 lot subdivision that Jenna, you want to come up? Council, the staff's staff report is intended to indicate whether or not this particular application is in compliance with the preliminary plat conditions that we've already approved. So Stormbro.
I'm mayor and member of the council. I thank you. Tonight, there is a request for a final plat approval of subdivision fiscal year 22, number five, as Mayor Evans has indicated. And the reason that you're seeing a final plat application is essentially because Idaho statute requires it. That's the Local Land Use Planning Act. And where there's that requirement, it says that the city council shall approve a final plat. Typically, most applications in Garden City come through as a combined preliminary final plat. And so that's where this may feel that it's a little bit different than you're used to. The applicant in this instance did intentionally decide to move through with just a preliminary plat. I think we have about three of those on the books. And the the way that Garden City's code is set up on final plats is that there is a recommendation from the planning official of whether or not the application is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plat or not. Those standards are quite objective. It's whether or not the the number of lots are the same or fewer, whether there's been an increase of common open space. If there have been minor changes required by the Transportation Department, or if the general configuration is the same, and those are found in the the draft potential decision document. Staff has concluded that the application is in substantial conformance. And tonight, your decision would be either to uphold or reject that decision by the planning official. I did want to note that the the findings required by Garden City code, while the the planning official does believe that this application is in substantial conformance. There have been additional comments received, both agency comments as well as public comments. The public comments are very similar to what were received in the preliminary plat. There were two comments concerned about traffic and congestion. The city engineer did note that he had reviewed the construction plans in this final plat as similar to the construction plans, that there's not been really additional information provided. Drainage District Number Two, however, did kind of have a humdinger of a of a comment where they had noted that the thermomile drainage has 100-foot easement on on that property. And they requested that all trees be removed. And, um, I can pull up an, an aerial, but in that uh particular area, when it came through as a preliminary plat, um, there is eighty-eight thousand six hundred and seven square feet of untouched um property along the drainage that is full of trees. And there's some good news, and then when this application came through, um, the that area was excluded from calculations. And so staff did that um because code requires one tree for every thousand square feet of landscaping, et cetera. And it, and it was just left to be preserved along the, the drainage area. Um, however, if there is the requirement to cut down all of those trees, it may trigger other components of the code that might be difficult for the applicant. Um, and the biggest one of those is Garden City Code has a tree mitigation requirement. Um, and so those trees per Garden City's code would need to be mitigated. Um, Drainage District number two did note in their, in their um comments that in certain occasions, they make exceptions to that rule. Um, ideally, the applicant will be able to negotiate an exception to that rule. If not, there may be some changes to how that drainage looks, and then the applicant would have to come back uh potentially and figure out how to deal uh with those changes that would be required. And with that, I stand for any questions. And it is a public hearing tonight, I just, I did want to note that.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Thorneborough, uh, as I recall, when this application came through, there was public testimony and concern about uh the wildlife that lives in the area of kind of at the bottom of the slope. And if I'm interpreting this correctly, we've got now a water district saying, and you've got to make it even worse by removing all of the trees. Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, uh, yes, that's how I read that comment. However, I did see an escape clause in the comment, so I'm hoping that the applicant is able to, to uh, um, work with the Drainage District.
And what, how would you summarize the escape clause?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, um, it, uh, the, the comments are pretty brief, I would, I would think that they're um standard comments talking about their hundred-foot easement and that they, what triggers them uh requiring license agreement and that they don't allow trees within that area. And then it, and then there's the escape clause that says in certain occasions, they make exceptions. Um, and, and that's um not having it in front of me, just paraphrasing.
And Ms. Thorneborough, how, what in your mind would be um, what would define an acceptable exception? Have you seen this before and, and what, what, what comprised an exception?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, um, I would, I have not seen it in this pers- particular instance where it's coming through on a final plat and it's not dealt with. Um, well, that's not, not necessarily true. I, I have seen trees that are identified in plans be precluded in easements um in the, in the past. And usually what happens is those trees just are not placed in those easements. Um, and then this one is so big, again, it's um eighty-eight thousand square feet. Um, and it's full of trees. Um, the applicant did make concessions based on what the design review had requested when they came to the city council to make sure to try to utilize that as a park-like amenity. Uh, perhaps all of those considerations where those trees are well established, been there for a long time, may be something that uh Thurman Mill or Drainage District number two may take into consideration um in their discussions with the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, counsel, this is a public hearing. Uh, anyone on the council need to declare a conflict before we take, uh, take this further. Okay, let the record reflect no conflict declarations. We've heard from the uh, we've heard from the city, um. Who's representing the applicant here? Yes, sir. You would give us your name and address, welcome, sir, it's great to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor, uh, John Brecken, Breckenland Design, sixty-six, sixty-one, North Glenwood Street, Garden City. I have a uh, a short presentation um that we submitted. Hmm.
Would you find that to be funny? I can even find it.
So, who'd you send?
Oh, it's a nine. I can find out.
Okay.
Hey, I'm a friend of my council, I hope like their, their uh presentation being in the email, so.
Here, we'll just recess for a few minutes.
What's up? Let's figure out a different way to handle this.
So. Okay, let's go back on the record now. Um. Are we ready? I mean, are we still recording?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right. Um, go ahead.
All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, just a brief uh overview here, what you'll find is that uh final plat is uh very close to what was approved for preliminary plat. Um. Site location here, we've got uh Chindon Boulevard and Coffee Street, and then this is where the, the U-Haul uh facility is. Uh, this is a uh print of the preliminary plat for reference. And you can see, we've got a mix of uh fourplex and sixplex uh building styles uh throughout. And on here, too, you can kind of see uh this, this is where the Thurman Drain is. And the property makes some interesting zigzags through here. Um. This is a very irregular shaped uh property. There, you can kind of see that again, and this is, this is a print of the latest uh, the final plat. And what you'll note is that uh the units are identical to the preliminary plat. Um, I think the only thing that really changed was we moved the uh, this dumpster from here over here, and we had a swale uh that we moved across. Uh, here's a copy of the actual um boundary uh work for the final plat. And then these are some uh building elevations. Um. This, this is the fourplex, uh, they're all two, two-story uh units. Uh, and so the fourplex. And this is a shot of the sixplex. So everybody has uh two-car garages. And I'll stand for questions.
Great, uh. Uh, thank you. Um. I had one question, um. The, the Drainage District easement, have they um conveyed you a recorded easement, or is this a prescriptive right that they're claiming?
Well, that is a good question. Wonder if it's on the uh. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure if it's, if it's uh recorded or prescriptive. I know that we reflect uh that easement on the final plat here, you can kind of see uh those, those lines uh that identify the width of the easement. Um, but um, I'd be glad to find out.
Okay, just a, just a curiosity on my perspective, because uh it doesn't impact the decision the council's making tonight at all. Uh, you're in substantial compliance, but the um, there, there can be a difference. Um, if the easement is recorded as exclusive or whether it's prescriptive and non-exclusive. And there's an interest the city would have in preserving the wildlife and the trees there, so just something you might run up and flagpole with somebody.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, yes, you bet, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We would, uh, we would as well like to uh retain those trees and, you know, it would be, uh, it would be difficult to especially with that uh, uh, odd property line and, you know, s- some of the neighbor's property crosses into that drain as well to try to remove uh parts of those trees or, you know, coordinate that with neighbors, so uh we'll, uh, follow up with Drainage District.
Hey, uh, counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
What's the difference between recorded and prescriptive?
Well, recorded uh means it's recorded at the county assessor's office. Uh, prescriptive is uh easement by use, and it's pretty common with irrigation uh conveyances, a lot of those are prescriptive, and uh they'll claim a, an area. Uh. But uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but uh a, a written easement can have specific uh declarations uh as to exclusivity, meaning it's for the exclusive use of the, in this case, the district, if it's uh prescriptive, they have the right to uh maintain and utilize it in its historic fashion typically. And that um, configuration and the vegetation that's there, I would want to know if I were the applicant, whether that's been there a long time, uh, trees don't grow overnight, so. So it's apparently been functioning uh and been maintained the level that it's ever maintained uh for extended period of time. So it's just a, I'm just raising a question, it might be a uh avenue of inquiry the applicant might want to make. Hey, any, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to ask Ms. Thorne, Thorneborough, a couple more questions.
Okay, we'll get, we'll, I'll bring her back, uh, any questions? Or was it, was it Brecken?
Uh, John Brecken, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have a question? What would the financial burden be to remove all those trees? Any, but, any budgetary?
Well, it would be substantial, I honestly, I don't not know.
Are we talking fifty thousand, are we talking a hundred thousand?
Well, the tree removal of, of those, of the size, I mean, you, you're talking a thousand fifteen hundred dollars per tree. Uh, just, just for the mechanics of it, and then uh, you know, the, I think the, the other concern there is the erosion control. Uh, because, you know, tearing out those trees and then the roots, and now you're gonna have exposed soils there that would erode and uh slough off into the drain. Um, it, um, uh, Councilmember, I, I I, I would, I would, I think we could make a strong case to uh discuss that with the Drainage District and convince him that it's functioning and has been functioning for quite a long time. Typically, there, the, the Drainage Districts are not heavy-handed on the drains, it's more the supply uh irrigation ditches that they're much more concerned about getting the water to where it needs to go, and so uh, the drain, the drainage uh ditches are uh just for that, for, for drainage uh downstream, and so as long as there's not an obstruction or something that needs to be removed and, and maybe that would be the way to approach it, you know, we could. and, and maybe that would be the way to approach it, you know, we could maybe do a little bit of cleanup in there if there's some, some debris, or some, some dead trees in there that we do some, some minimal maintenance for them, that might be enough to, to suffice. It, it would be a big cost, honestly, because that, that's quite a stretch there, and there are a lot of big trees, and then to stabilize all that, you'd have to come back and, you know, recompact the soil, and then hydroseed it and make sure that it got stabilized. I, I would, I would, you know, off the top of my head, estimate, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to do that kind of work on that stretch.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'll open the public hearing at this point. I've got one person signed up, Brian Roth. Welcome, Mr. Roth, it's a pleasure to see you. If you would, give us your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Brian Roth, five zero two one North Sorrento, two R's Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero four. I wrote everything down because I want to make sure to cover some stuff specifically, so unfortunately, I'm not going to be as friendly here talking to you, but I am in support of the development, I think it's actually a great development for the land use that's there. But first off, I want to thank you guys, because I think Garden City is actually very forward-thinking when it comes to development. I live just up on the hill there in the Glenwood Rim neighborhood, which is adjacent to this development. And I frequent Garden City all the time. I love Garden City. There's so many amenities down there, there's a lot to do. You guys do a great job, and I really appreciate that. I also believe that this, the Coffey Town Homes PUD is probably the best use for the land that's there. And I've appreciated the back and forth that the city of Garden City has been doing the past year, year and a half to get it right. Right? There's been changes that have been made, and they've all been positive changes for this development. As this final plaque gets approved, I want to make sure that safety for vehicles and pedestrians is addressed. With the addition of these seventy-seven residential units in such a small area, it's extremely important to make sure that there's safe paths of travel, both for pedestrians and for vehicle travel as well. With the proposed egress directly onto Chindon being a right-in, right-out only, and no planned improvements to Coffee Street to include a dedicated turn lane left out of there, I really believe that this will create an unsafe traffic flow that could lead to pedestrian safety issues as a result. So for a resident in the Coffey Town Homes development to safely turn west onto Chindon in the morning, let's say, if Coffee Street is backed up, then they're going to have to egress by going on to Coffee Street, going up the hill, which is north, I'm sorry, south, going up the hill, and then they're going to turn, I guess it would be west on the Mountain View Drive, they're going to go probably at least a quarter of a mile, and then they're going to go north on the Maple Grove, go down the hill, and then they'll encounter the first opportunity to turn left on Chindon at a traffic signal. The Glenwood Rim neighborhood demographics have been changing. In the past six years that I've lived there, I've seen a steady change from older residents to much younger residents, many of which have children, probably like many of the residents that will be living in the Coffee Street Town Homes. Younger working families typically generate more traffic, especially at peak times, going to work and dropping off kids at school, and conversely, in the evenings. Growth is continuing to come. And when it does, having safe options is critically important. An option that may be a win-win for the existing neighborhoods in the area, Coffee, Street Town Homes, the residents there, Garden City, and those traveling through the area is reducing the speed limit west of the Coffey Town Homes, rather than having a right-in, a right-out onto Chindon, installing a traffic measure similar to the one on Franklin Road, just south of the Boise Volkswagen car lot with flexible delineator posts, and, sorry, I do have a copy of that area, I only have a five, is that right? Maybe just pass them around, that's okay. So this, this measure, if you reduce the speed limit, it creates a really, actually a safe to get it first. So to me, this is the right place for a solution like this. There's no public road across the street from, across Chindon, from the Coffee Street Town Homes. So this sort of a solution would be one that might work. What it does is it provides a safe option for all Coffey Town Home residents to turn west and safely merge onto Chindon. This will not increase traffic use on Coffee Street, which obviously is not being improved, there's no left-hand turn-handling being proposed there, and it should eliminate the need to travel up into the existing neighborhood to get to the closest traffic light at Maple Grove and Chindon. That's pretty much all I have. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Well, I, Mr. Roth, I very much appreciate your testimony, and we'll certainly get a copy of this to the applicant, your suggestion. The Chindon's a state highway, there's a different authority there. Garden City doesn't have that authority on improvements that are made within the state highway right away. So we'll get this in the hands of the, of the applicant, and if this is something that they think would work, they can approach Ho Department Transportation and and see if they can, they can get it done.
Sounds good.
Any other, any other questions for Mr. Roth?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Roth, I would like to echo the mayor's comments. I appreciate your thoughtful observations and concerns and the recommendations. I can't tell you how often we hear public testimony of concerns and sometimes complaints with no ideas or suggestions for solutions, so I really applaud you bringing in ideas for a solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, guys.
We'll get you a copy of this. Okay, anyone else that has not signed up to testify that wishes to testify? I'll just wait a minute and see if we have any anybody online. Hey, I don't, I don't see anybody. Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Brecken, you can come out, come, come up, let's make sure he gets a copy of this exhibit. You can have mine.
Thank you.
John Brecken, Brecken Land Design, sixty-six, sixty-one, North Glenwood Street. I would certainly like to, you know, make the connections there, vehicular traffic as safe as possible, and as such, you know, we have conducted traffic impact study and worked with ITD as well as the Ada County Highway District, and met all of their requirements and, and needs, so I'll certainly run this by them and see if there's something we can do to further improve what we've already designed in an effort to make it as safe as possible.
Great. This is your opportunity for rebuttal, there's not much of a, that's the rebut right now, but any closing comments and?
Closing comments would just be, I think it's a good, a good fit, and for the neighborhood there, I look forward to seeing it built. And I definitely want to follow up with that drainage district, see if we could save those trees, because that would I, I think it'd be a shame to, to just clear cut that and demolish all that area there, so, cool. We've got a little, little bit more work to get across the finish line, but we're up for the task.
Great, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and matters properly before the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Going along with the Development Director, Director of the Authority for Development and the finding of substantial compliance, I would move to sustain the planning officials' recommendation for SUBFY twenty-two zero 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 five.
Thank you. Motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Aaron Anderson, call the role.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jurgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Restonson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion carries, by the way. Okay, item G two. Chief, you want to come up? Thank you. Hopefully everybody had a chance to read the memo, this is another one of your mayor's requests to take advantage of an opportunity we did not expect. We've had some challenges getting cars we've ordered for the police department, and cars are like a pretty important part of the dysfunction, so, so, so anyway, chief, take it away.
I hope you got, all got a chance to read the memo. Sorry, I didn't know I was going to be here tonight, I don't have it in front of me, but essentially, typically what's happened in the past is the manufacturers introduce their new model year, so like a twenty-five, they'd introduce July, it used to be like October of the previous year, so in twenty-four, well, they've been marching those back slowly, even on the commercial side. So last year, when we went to order cars, Ford, we typically order the Ford interceptors, Ford said for the model year twenty-four, the only cars we're going to build are from model year twenty-three that we didn't fill, because they basically, and in the past, they would open the order bank, and it'd be open for a month or two or three, and you could order, and the last couple of years, because of COVID and supply chain issues, because of that, they're like, we're going to open it this day, and it'll close in a week, so you have a week, and when we're going to open it without pricing, so and sometimes when we order, and we don't even know how much they're going to cost. For fiscal twenty-four, so in twenty, or sorry, twenty-three and twenty-two, Chevy opened up their orders, but they didn't tell anyone, they were only going to be open for one day. So for example, the sheriff's office needed nineteen Tahos, and they didn't get any off that order because no one knew they were going to be open for a day. Fortunately, a dealer down in Jerome bought a bunch, and so they were able to get them, so fast forward to this year, we, they said, okay, you can't buy Explorers, so we okay, we'll go with the Tahoe, ordered the Tahos, like a month later, they're like, yeah, you didn't get any Tahos, because for the entire Northwest, there were all three, three thousand thirty-five hundred units that were requested by departments, and they only are releasing a thousand, so went to the Durango, which they were available earlier, but this is the last year of the Durango, so we didn't want to have two cars that were only kind of one-off, so we ended up, we did order two Durangos, and then about a week ago, got an email from the dealer who does the state bid, and we also piggyback on Boise bid, because sometimes Boise gets a cheaper rate than the state does. Like, hey, we have twelve inbound black Ford Explorers that are going to be available to purchase, and so they sent the stickers out, so we can make sure that they are equipped generally like we did, my, and I haven't talked to the guy, but I think what happened was is, out of all the twenty, they had so many twenty-three orders and agencies had ordered, well, they couldn't wait for those, and so they ordered, so they didn't fulfill, so essentially the other thing they said is now, we're also anticipating opening the twenty-five model year bids within the next week. And those will close within a couple of weeks, and we would get those before the end of this fiscal year, if we did order them, so we would, wouldn't be able to, we typically order them in July and August, and we get them after the fiscal year, so it's not an issue. Typically, they've been running Yes, so typically, the model year, they jump up about ten thousand. When I first started buying cars, when I got involved in it a long time ago, the first Explorers were like twenty-six thousand, and now they're about forty-seven thousand. And so just mentioned it to the mayor, the, hey, we could get these Explorers, and so thought we'd ask to see if, I, I think the mayor talked to Ms. Libby about the funding on it, because obviously that's not part of the budget we have in our capital line item. And so that's where it stands. So any questions?
So that's where it is, we have we can move a few things around to fund this. Where looks like we're going to end the year below budget with the police department, particularly because of the staffing issues we've had. And there may be a few things. The chief hasn't determined what, if any, but there may be a few other expenses in the police department on minor equipment that we could wait a year on. We've got a, basically a contingency fund we carry in our, I call it a stabilization fund, but that we carry on the books that we have not allocated anything, so we can make it, we can make it work. It's just another one of these. We have to order twenty-fives early for next year. We're still going to have to talk about whether we do order a couple of twenty-fives to supplement these two, if the council lets us buy them, but I think we're going to be money ahead, and the, the cars we buy, I think, maybe most of you know this, but they, they, they're special. They, they aren't just four-tour, they have to be pursuit rated, so they got heavy wheels and suspensions are different probably, and all the rewiring for a bunch of stuff, probably that
Yes, sir.
If we had, we could get it across town a lot quicker, but we can't do that legally, so. Anyway.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
So do we get two Durangos plus these two cars?
Yes, sir.
So we, we did get the Durango.
Well, we have Vins for them, but we haven't, we don't have a build date for those yet, sir, and so
So, so we didn't cancel the Durango orders to get these?
No, sir. This, we typically budget for four cars per year, and so far, the two, we bought one unmarked car, and then the two Durangos, sir, and so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So we think because we have a VIN that will get the Durangos, that's we're confident, and we're not going to be like in the boat we were with the Tahos. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it could, it could be a while.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief Stenbo. What additional amount of money is needed to fully provision these for fitness for duty, insofar as the other equipment, decals?
So to, last year roughly, sorry, I don't have the exact number on the top of my head, to fully out of, so that's the, cost of the car is like forty-seven, seven fifty-one. The lighting, the additional lighting, the light bars, the push bumpers, with the pit bumpers, the install, we put plastic seats in the back instead of the, we don't keep the cushion ones in there, because people would stick stuff underneath them. If people
You don't need to explain lots of nasty things.
Yes, yeah, so it just makes it easier, so
We call that evidence.
The cage. Like, that, that as well, those have gone up every year about ten percent, so that package there is roughly sixteen or seventeen thousand, radars are about twenty-four hundred, I'm in MDT, and the mount, they're about thirty-five hundred or four thousand, and we put a printer in for e-ticketing, which is, we're finally going back to, thanks to ITS. And then we're debating honestly on our graphics package, because the car washes, Jay's Car Wash used to do hand washes, and they've eliminated those, and the jets they put in are destroying our graphics, so we're in, we're trying to figure that out. Probably simplifying those up a little bit, making them Probably simplifying those up a little bit, making them. We just don't know what we're going to do there. So that cost typically though is about twenty-two hundred dollars a car. We're hoping to lower that, that if we just make it a little simpler and make them so that they last so the car washes don't destroy them. So about probably, I think the Explorer was about sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand.
We were able to get those last year around fifty-five total.
No, well, not when you throw the M V Ts and stuff in. I, I can, I can go look. I have a spreadsheet.
Under a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. I would imagine with the increase in price in the twenty, I think this, these are forty-seven, four fifty-one. And I think the other ones we paid for in the last fiscal year were forty-two, something. So about that ten percent. So seventy-five to seventy-six thousand is what I would estimate to completely equip those. And speaking, I haven't, we potentially could, if we don't buy an additional C I D car for this year, we could use the capital line item. And I don't know exactly how much is left in there. We've Lieutenant Patterson, Lieutenant Dominy, and I've talked about doing that. Just, we have the money outfitting all four and getting the patrol fleet back up and then talking to the mayor next year about replacing a couple of the C I D cars that are getting a little older and getting some higher miles on.
Thank you for the detailed answer.
Yes, sir. Criminal investigators.
So.
No more verses for me.
So, Mr. Mayor, chief, we're talking all in one, one hundred and forty thousand is really what we're looking for.
Well, we weren't. We don't have to outfit these right now. We can get them outfitted later.
Would it be within this budget here or?
Well.
Because that's.
Part of the plan was potentially was to get them before the prices went up. And even if we didn't have the money to outfit them, we can, we can still license them and ensure them and would use them as spare cars, not patrol cars. But for example, if one of you went to a conference, we could just drop that and then outfit it potentially in next fiscal year.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I was not clear about that.
And if they don't buy a fourth car, if there's some other things we work out internally, we could do one or both of the upfittings, but.
A Shelby. Did you say a Shelby?
Well.
Like, yes, chief.
Well, the reason we're here, we're pretty, you know, pretty careful about asking the council to approve a budget that has four cars in it and then we want to buy six. So again, this is just an opportunity issue. It's interesting because during the audit presentation, we're talking about fund balance.
Yeah.
Now, now we're not going to have to tap the fund balance for this, but I'm just saying you know, there's some opportunity benefits there that you can't really anticipate. And it's a safety net for you know, if you plan on getting out over your skis just a little bit, then you're, you've got a little safety net there as well if you need it. But again, this was, this was an opportunity and we've been pretty frustrated because we can't get cars and if we had to buy them and, and just keep them in inventory till we can outfit them, we're prepared to do that. And, and if the chief can, they'd rather have one of these cars, maybe both of them outfitted in lieu of buying a fourth car this year. I, I don't have an issue letting him make that determination. He's got to manage the fleet. So, so that's where we are. So the request on the agenda is for ninety-five, whatever it was.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do, do we have more detail on where, how much will come out of the police budget and how much would be coming out of the safety net budget of the city?
Well, when I mentioned safety net, I was talking about fund balance, zero out of that.
Okay.
So we would manage that within the current budget we have. You'll notice on the audit that we came in ahead on number of items. A budget is a best guess at the time as prepared. It's the best estimate we have with the information we have at the time. So so it's part analysis and a little bit of forecasting that is hard to, you know, to pinpoint. I think everybody understands, understands that. I haven't hit my budget at home for decades. So so we're trending pretty good in some areas and we certainly can cover this ninety-five, five oh two. And if the chief makes an administrative decision regarding how we come up with the upfitting costs within his vehicle line item that he currently has, then you know, we can sure let you know, but.
So as a, as a distribution, though, is it sixty percent out of the police?
I haven't done that. I haven't done the percentage. They're trending over a hundred thousand to the good right now. So.
Majority of it will be pulled from the police budget.
Well, yeah. Yeah, it would be funded up. Please. The reason, yeah, yeah, it's, it's a capital expenditure really and it's even if it's within the budget you all approved on a situation like this, it's, it's appropriate for me to bring it to you so that you can.
So we have the funds to just buy now or buy more, pay more later.
Well, that's one way to, that's one way to put it. Yeah. 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 Well, yeah. Yeah. And we, you know, we're still going to have to order, you know, this would reduce the order for our twenty-five cars that we have some kind of deadline, we may have to order those. Well, we'll need a couple of those. I've always been pretty insistent on the four car a year replacement policy we have. It saves on maintenance on one side, but dependability in a police car is pretty high priority and keeping that fleet fresh. I just have been here long enough that we got behind the curve in the nineties on keeping police cars fresh. We leased them for a while. We had fleet cars for a while and it, it took a long time to get our legs back under. So right now we have a car per officer. These cars now are lasting anywhere from six to nine years. So the life of the car and the upfitting equipment in them, you know, have a similar useful life that way. Fleet cars, we were having to replace them every three years because you're running them. You run them all the time. We have, everybody has their personal, personal, i.e. their issued equipment in the car all the time. We've got it. You know, we're not running it out of the police station, changing stuff out, doing one car and another and all that stuff. There are a lot of advantages to it and the size of our department allows us to do that. It's pretty hard to do that if you have three hundred officers, but but it really helps, helps the operation here. So anyway, I'm getting off on a rabbit trail, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With the imperative that well-running cars equals safety and saving lives. And with the idea and testimony, we've heard that cars are not going to get cheaper as the budget years go on. And with the thought that a nice fringe benefit that helps offset salaries is a take-home cost. I move that we approve the mayor to enter a purchase agreement at Mount Home Auto Ranch for the purchase of two twenty-two four Ford interceptors in an amount up to exceed twenty-five, five oh two, or I'm sorry, ninety-five, five oh two.
I wish it was twenty-five. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr.? I would further add that we are not going into debt to source these vehicles.
That's correct. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Aaron and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Carries unanimously. Thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda for this evening. An entertaining motion to adjourn?
I salute.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.